Let us start with the [inaudible 00:01:23].
Plug allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are all these minutes, which I hope that all of you guys have seen. Thank you. There are minutes that I hope all of you guys have seen. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Approve the minutes from January twenty-second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. So we have new business, which is crime topics for review by Counselor LaPlante.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. What I would like to do at this point is, I would like to, at some point, make a motion to table. But my idea behind this is there are about twelve different items that are on there. What I would like to see our committee do is to take one item each month, invite the police department, and then have a very robust, in-depth conversation about each item. So one item a month. And that way, we can go through it as, and the goal of this is a couple of things. One is to educate us, educate the people that we represent, both understand the issue and then understand what we're doing about it, and then try to figure out what we're doing to improve upon it. So, like I said, there's twelve different issues, and they range from as high-profile like murder to things like quality of life, like noise or parking, things that are, and everything in between. So, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to table and understand that we're going to invite the police chief at our next meeting to have that discussion.
Second.
Motion is second. So all those in favor of tabling thirty-eight eighteen, crime topics for review, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on.
I would like to make a motion to take item one thirty-three seventeen out of the table matters.
There is a motion to take item one thirty-three seventeen, Lawrence Police Department, Lawrence Trust Act report, out of table. This is second.
Second.
Is there a need for discussion? So all those in favor of taking said table matter, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it, so.
So, according to the Lawrence ordinance of the trust act, we are supposed to get a report every three months about the, about the trust act. How it's, how we're doing with the, with this ordinance, and perhaps getting some update and a statistic in terms of crimes, how the ordinance has been working for the city and so far. So, through you, I would like to get some update from the chief of police.
Good evening, Counselors. Before we begin, I would just like to say thank you. I'd like forward to working with you tonight and in the future about these items and other ones that you may have. Just like to say that I have Lieutenant Maurice Aguilar here with me, in case you have any questions for him as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Regarding the trust act, what I have here is a couple of items going back as far as 2015. And I will give you a copy of this. This item will be given to the city clerk to retain his records now and moving forward. So for 2015, September through December, we had no interactions in terms of the trust act ordinance. In 2016, there were five, what we would call, interactions having to do with the trust act. And if you'd like, I could brief you on each one, or?
Yes, please. Thanks.
So in February, we had a notice of an ICE detainer where no action was taken. A person was held on state warrants only. And if you're familiar with that, that means the individual is either held for bail at the police department or bailed by the clerk, or eventually brought over to court. And that's pretty much the procedure that we have with the Lawrence Police Department. February, another incident in February, an individual arrested on drug violations, and subsequent fingerprints led to an ICE detainer being placed upon him. That individual was held by us only on state charges, eventually brought over to court, and the court held him or didn't hold him, depending on their procedures. And again, that would have nothing to do with the city or the police department. March twenty-third, an individual was arrested on gun charges, along with federal authorities. Passenger of the vehicle was taken into custody, and again, that individual was processed on the state charges and brought over to court eventually. August eleventh, an individual was arrested for warrants for drug trafficking. And through his fingerprints, his, it was identified that he was an illegal entry. An ICE detainer was placed on that person. And again, he was held on state charges and eventually brought over to court, and the court processed him there. In December, there was a drug trafficking arrest. The detainee was put on an individual, again, held on state charges, eventually either bailed in or brought over to court. That summarizes 2016. Twenty-seventeen, January twenty-fifth, an individual was arrested on state warrants.
How many we get in total for seventeen?
I'm sorry?
How many we get, how many interactions we get for two thousand seventeen?
Two thousand seventeen, there are four altogether, so far. I'm sorry, four in 2017, nine in 2018.
You said nine in 2018?
None, none so far. Sorry.
So can you go through the twenty-seventeen ones?
Sure. In January twenty, about the twenty-fifth of January, an individual arrested on state warrants. That individual was, again, processed and held for court. On May ninth, two suspects were charged with trafficking illegal narcotics over two hundred grams. Both suspects were also held on immigration detainers, but it appears one suspect was summoned to court and the other one was transported to court and held on our state charges and proceeded through the court process. July fifteenth, a suspect was arrested for assault and battery with a dangerous weapon, assault and battery on a family member. The, there was warrants that showed an active immigration warrant for the suspect. Immigration was notified, and the person was transported to court for processing. On August fifteenth, the subject was placed under arrest on a federal warrant. He was just courtesy booked at the Lawrence Police Department. That suspect was transported the next morning to court. And that summarizes 2017 as well. I have a copy of this document for you.
So, through you, when we talk, when we talk about the trust act, so what, what it will be a different situation if you don't, if the city of Lawrence haven't adopted the trust act? And how that will be a difference? So we have in 2017, four different interactions, and if you don't have the trust act, what would happen?
I think the only, to me, I believe it just re-solidifies our organization and our interactions in terms of how we go about dealing with immigration issues. Our interaction solely is based on state-type charges. In other words, we're not going out looking for people with immigration issues. Our only contact becomes when an individual is arrested on other charges and their fingerprints are taken. And sometimes it comes back that they're wanted for other crimes, or they may be an illegal entry or something to that effect. And then that person is just, it's noted on the booking form, and one of two things is going to happen in that event. The bail bondsman will come in, and he'll determine bail based on all the facts. And then he'll determine whether it is bail or not, or the individual is brought over to court like everybody else. And then the court will deal with whatever they want to do. The judge will ultimately determine bail or no bail. So our, our really activity is really only on state sort of charges, narcotics, firearms, things of that nature. And then the ICE sort of involvement really becomes only, thank you, really becomes sort of an administrative portion. That information is just attached to the paperwork. But eventually, the court, the judge, or the bail bondsman, the clerk magistrate is determining bail on that. So for us, it's just more of a solidifying our interactions, if you will, dealing with immigration issues.
Later on, if anybody have questions?
Is there any other questions?
Yeah. I have seen ICE, working in the community, and knocking on people's doors. What do you do when you find out that they are already in the city?
So usually, you know, there are ICE individuals that are part of different task forces. So there may be like a drug task force, which is made up of different agencies, state police, DEA, things like that, Homeland Security and stuff like that. We go out and they'll do drug warrants or things like that. They may be part of that, but we've never gone out with, to my knowledge, gone out with ICE individuals just knocking on people's doors for that, for that purpose of an administrative warrant. We don't take, we don't take part in that sort of operation, I guess, is the, is the answer.
In other words, they had the right to?
They do because they have, they have the federal authority to do that. Just like the Massachusetts State Police, they don't need our, they don't need our help. They have the authority, but, you know, based on Massachusetts state powers to go out and do the work that they do. And sometimes they do it with us, and sometimes they don't. Sometimes you know about it, a lot of times we don't. So the federal authorities are the same way, FBI, C, you know, the FBI, Homeland Security. They have federal powers that allow them to do investigations. And a lot of times, like I said, they don't tell us.
Any, anybody else ask questions? Counselor LaPlante?
So, out of these nine, and there's just nine, right, total, since we adopted this in 2015? So out of these nine, were any of these involved in any kind of gang activities?
Um, so.
Gang members?
Yeah, it's not noted, it's not noted in here that any of them were, so I'm going to assume that they weren't. I look more about drugs and guns at this point.
Is there a specific gang that these individuals are involved with?
Specifically in Lawrence, there are a number of, there are a number of gangs. The usual LGD, Latin Kings. There was a small portion of MS-13 that's involved, and some other, you know, local street gangs that are much, much smaller.
What was the second thing you said?
Latin Kings.
And?
Latin Gangs of Disciples.
Yeah, okay.
MS-13.
MS-13 is part of?
Very, very small amount.
Any of these part of the MS-13 group?
Not that I'm aware of, at this point.
Any of these part of the LGD group?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So do, so we don't know, then, if any of these nine are involving in, were members of various gangs, or do we?
I'm going to guess that they're not, because it's not, it's not noted in, in the report here that I have. It goes as far as to say that one was a, one was a domestic situation, another was, or two other ones were, three other ones were drug trafficking, and another one was a gun charge. But there's no notes in here referencing to a gang at this point.
Do we know where the, where the, where these individuals are, their nationality, where they're from?
I might have to get that information.
So you don't know that?
I don't. Again, it's not really.
We just know, we just know whether or not they're here lawfully or unlawfully, or documented or undocumented. Is that what, that's all we know when you put the, you do their thumbnail, not thumbnail, you do their fingerprints?
All of them, yeah.
And then, and then that goes into some sort of registry somewhere, and it kicks back some information. It says to you, this person, we have record on this. What is it, when you do that, what, that's a good question. So when you arrest somebody, and I'm imagining you're doing this for everybody under arrest, everybody, right? You would ask them to do the fingerprinting?
Yes, that's part of the process.
Part of it. And then, once you do that, what happens to the fingerprints? Where does that go?
To the state, federal, not website, but, that's the word I'm looking for. Organization, if you will, that monitors, that's, that's, the data banks, I guess, is what you'd call it. And that's for anybody. If that was, if you were to get arrested, or I were to get arrested, your fingerprints were put in that system. A lot of times, people use false names, so we'll book them under one name. And then the process, the computer could take anywhere from thirty seconds to ten, fifteen minutes later for that information to come back. And what happens in these cases that we're talking about tonight is that it comes back that there's someone else or that there is a, some sort of issue, whether it's a state warrant, federal warrant, or the like. That'll come back with that information.
And that comes back to where? So you're in the cruiser?
Not the cruiser. This is all done at the station.
Oh, okay.
So no one's running around, no one is running around the city in a cruiser, putting people's fingerprints in the cruiser or anything like that. This is all done, again, all these interactions, I can't stress enough, all these interactions are done after someone is arrested by us on some sort of state charges, gun, drugs, warrants, or the like, domestics or something like that. We come back, everybody gets fingerprinted, and then from there, the information comes back. And then from there, we document that information. And again, a bail, a bail bondsman, a clerk will come in to determine bail based on the information. It has nothing to do with us, and/or that individual is eventually transported to court. And the court does the same thing. They determine, based on all the information, the state charges, whether or not there's warrants or not, the judge will determine bail from there.
So once you, for those very categories you just mentioned, at the police station, they're already arrested, and you get kicked back some information from the, I guess, the state?
Right, the state and federal authorities.
Federal authorities, and you learn from them that this individual is, has no record of being a, is here unlawfully or undocumented. What, at that, once you find that out, does that change the way that you approach that individual? If I go to Tripoli's Bakery and I'm, I need a cannoli in the worst possible way, break it in, I'm granted in, I've got a real track record, and you arrest me because I just broke in daylight, or in the evening, whatever the worst cause is, and I stole those several cannolis, right? And I still plant that, say, you're going to the station, you put my hand, I put it on there, get the stuff, kicks back. And they say, in this particular case, okay, well, you live on twenty-nine, you, blah, blah, blah. You're, you're, we're going to keep you under arrest for whatever the thing is. If it was my evil cousin who did the same thing, but my evil cousin was not a, was not, was not here lawfully, was not here, undocumented, does the same thing, and you arrest him, you put his hand over there, you find out that he's not, he's not here lawfully or he's undocumented, what happens at that point? What's the difference in how you treat me versus my evil cousin?
There's no difference in the treatment. You're booked the same way, you're placed in a cell. The only thing that happens is that piece of information is put with the rest of the booking information. And again, when the clerk magistrate comes in to determine bail, he reviews our documents, he reviews any other documents that are there. He determines bail at that point. If the clerk magistrate is not involved, that individual, say, is arrested at ten o'clock in the morning, we would transport them over to court before one o'clock. So all of that information, again, would just be put into the, into the docket, would be transferred over to court with the individual, and then go before the judge, and the judge would do the same thing. So nothing changes on our end. Again, all we're doing is documenting whatever information comes back out of the computer. We're putting it with the rest of the computer complaints, and it's all being brought over to court. And the court is going to determine the next step, the next process.
Court, court makes that decision.
So the city of Lawrence and Lawrence Police Department will be, you know, out of it at that point. And again, it's just, it's mostly an administrative thing.
Okay, got it.
We're only interested in, you know, our charges and our paperwork, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor LaPlante.
Yes, in other words, you don't, you don't take people to immigration.
No.
You do your part as, according to the crime that the person has committed, and then the judge has to decide what he's going to do.
Judge or the clerk magistrate, you're right. Yep.
Thank you. Chief, I just have a few questions first. Thank you for giving us this report.
I just, I want to understand the process a little bit more. So if someone, let's say, for, for instance, you arrested someone on drug charges, they have, you know, you fingerprint them, you see that they have an ICE detainer, are you saying that the only thing that, that you do is just put that document in that folder?
Right.
Okay. Is, so how does ICE become aware that we have detained that individual? Or do, or is that after they go through the first court process?
I think as soon as the fingerprints are put into the system, and there's some sort of issue that's raised with their identification, or some sort of detainer, or a warrant, it could be a state warrant, a federal warrant, different agencies are notified at that point, I believe. And then they contact us and say, we have, you know, paperwork that we want to put in their folder, and that's, that's what happens.
Okay.
So they notify us. We don't notify them. We don't have that ability. That information is all done through the fingerprint process that goes through the state and the federal agencies.
And usually, when they notify you, how quickly do they notify you?
It depends on the fingerprints, and it depends on the agency, really. It's been, it's been immediate, it's been hours later, it's kind of all over the place, depends on the system, and how, you know, how quickly they notify, how quickly they can figure it out on their end as well.
And for, for those individuals, does ICE come to the station? Or do they wait for, for us to go through sort of like the process? So let's say you arrested someone for A and B, right? And right before the bail, they do bail, would they come in, or?
They could, I guess, is the answer.
Would we, knowing that ICE has a detainer and that they're about to, you know, going to court for bail, would we hold them before, or do we, do we continue our normal process without even thinking about that ICE holder?
Yeah, we, we just continue with the process. They have come when, when there's been some, say, like a murderer or something, something very high level where that individual is really wanted, people have shown up, you know, to take those individuals into custody. Other times, we don't even hear from them again, other than they place in their, their paperwork and our paperwork, and they go over to court, and what happens at court, I'm not sure. They may go over there and, and pick them up from there when the judge releases them, or, or get involved in the process there, but I wouldn't know that information. We don't get involved in that process.
Okay, great. And so what if, in a hypothetical situation, someone is stopped for driving without a license, right? And you fingerprint them, and, you know, we find out that there's just nothing on them, clean record. So what's the regular process for, for someone that, you know, gets in trouble because of that, and then someone who, you know, they get fingerprinted and they find out they have an ICE detainer?
So everyone is, it's this process, the same for everyone. Whoever gets arrested, the same process. The same questions are asked, the same forms are filled out, the same pictures are taken, and the fingerprints are always taken by everyone that's arrested for any offense that comes into the police department. That's the procedure. So whether or not they have an ICE detainer or not, or doesn't, doesn't matter. Whatever the charges are, if you're coming in there to be, to be arrested, you're going to get fingerprinted.
Okay. And then the, the ICE notification, that's automatic, so that's not even with you, that's just the system?
Right. Like it's, when we, like I said, when we print them, those, that information comes back to us and also goes out to other agencies, I'm assuming, and they, they get notified.
Okay. Have you received any type of, like, civilian complaints from, like, you know, officers saying that they, not officers, from like civilians saying that they were stopped by an officer who was asking for, like, green card citizenship information?
I have not, not, certainly not in the short time I've been the chief, am I aware of any of that. But prior to that, in my other capacity, I was never received any complaints from anyone, anyone that working for me, or, or even hearing at the station that someone was filing a complaint regarding that. I'm not aware of any allegations like that. Certainly, certainly is that possible by a federal agency in here doing that? It's very plausible.
Okay. Because I think, you know, one of the things that the trust ordinance went to was just ensuring that the relationship of the police department was one where the local community could trust it.
Right.
So I'm glad that you haven't received any complaints on that. What, do you have any knowledge as far as to what type of training are police officers and just, you know, staff received in order to be sort of, you know, trained on this ordinance and understand, you know, what, why it's there for?
I know that there was some, some memos sent down by the former chief regarding that, and some memos were read at roll call to the, to the different officers and discussed there in terms of this ordinance. I believe that's the only training that's, that's, that I'm aware of. I know moving forward, we're, among other things, we're looking at even more extensive training for our office to make sure that everybody understands what can and can't be done under this ordinance, for sure.
That sounds great. I think, you know, one of the big issues that we have is that sometimes our residents don't know whether it's a Lawrence Police Officer, you know, state sheriff. You know, like, there's just so many different agencies that are sometimes operating within Lawrence. So they'll say, you know, I got pulled over for one thing, but you don't know exactly what department that officer was in. But I know I definitely have heard of situations like that. I just couldn't say if it was our department or someone else's.
I would hope that that's not the case, and if it was, we would, we would take, you know, we would take that matter very seriously. That's not how we operate. Certainly, that's not how we want to operate moving forward. You know, we want to make sure that we have the trust of the community to build that support. We want people, we want people to come forward with information and work with us. And we're definitely not going to have that happen if people think that they can't trust us or if we're running around the city, you know, trying to do something like that. I mean, that's just not how we operate. So certainly, moving forward, that's, that's not something that, that we want to do.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Through you.
Counselor, over to you guys.
I just want to make sure that we, we understand what's the trust act policy means to the city of Lawrence. Do you, do you guys do, do regular meetings in terms of the, you know, training for this ordinance at the police department?
No. So for this ordinance, we don't. Like I said, under the previous chief, there was some memo sent down regarding the, the ordinance, and some instruction at that point between the officers. But this is one of the things that, that's on our agenda moving forward, to try to make sure that all the officers are aware of exactly what this means. They're all going to get a copy of it, they're all going to have to sign off on it, and make sure that they fully understand what the ordinance means and what they can and can't do.
I just wanted to understand, if an immigration, if they, if ICE is called the department or is trying to get somebody, to try to hold somebody for, for them, it's my understanding that, it's my understanding that, according to the ordinance, we not necessarily have to collaborate with them, right?
Right. So again, I-
If it is not a high-end, a high-end crime, obviously.
Right, but they're going to put their detainer on them anyway, and eventually, what's going to happen is the clerk magistrate or the judge is going to be the one that determines whether that person gets held or not. It's not the Lawrence Police Department. We, our first interaction with that person, the reason they're at the police department is because they're under arrest for something else. So we have our own charges. So again, when the bail bondsman comes, the clerk magistrate comes in, not the bail bondsman, clerk magistrate comes in to, to process them for bail, they take all that information and they decide what their, what their policy is or what their next move is in terms of bail. And they may take those, I'm sure they take those things into consideration when they're deciding whether they're not going to bail somebody or not. And again, that could be, why are they being held? Why is the detainer being held? Is it a murderer, or is it someone who's just an illegal entry, or something minor like that? They take all that information into consideration, and they determine bail or, or no bail. But that's certainly not the Lawrence Police Department's job to determine that. Our interaction, again, begins from some other criminal activity. That's why they're under arrest.
So we're not doing that?
What's that?
We're not doing that. We're not informing ICE about any immigration status, right?
No. They're getting all that information right through the computer. They don't really even need us to, to give them any information.
So just, just to make sure, so Counselor Rodriguez, I think, so while we are not calling up ICE, once you do the fingerprint, it sounds like it's just an automatic information. Yeah?
Right.
Yeah, but, um-
Do you have any questions?
I do, I do. So because Section B of the ordinance says very clearly about this request. And I just want to make sure that we, we following that. Section B and Section C.
Right.
One of the interactions that we have in 2017, which is interaction number nine, is that was a high-end crime?
Which one was it, May ninth?
Number nine, yeah.
Oh, number nine.
Do you remember that specific interaction?
I mean, no, I don't remember it specifically. I'm just going by the notes here that was gone through the system.
Because that, I understand, if this happened, I understand if it is a high-end crime, that they're more than, we're more than happy to allow them to do that. But if it is just a simple crime, it's violating the Section C of the ordinance.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it says a, it says a federal warrant, so I'm assuming it wasn't just, it just wasn't something minor. We'd have to, I'd have to do some searching to see exactly what the crime was.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that we are on the same page in terms of what the ordinance says for the city of Lawrence and what we've been doing in terms of reporting or any interaction with this. And, and by, by me saying that, that also mean that we're not going to collaborate with ICE if it is, if it is not a high-end crime, because we have done it, and I completely agree, and I completely understand that this should be done. But not for every particular situation, we should be in touch with the federal government, because that's our job.
I think the important, I think the important thing is that we're not, we're not going out knocking on people's doors for, for minor things. Our interactions are generally, you know, on the street for some sort of criminal activity that requires somebody to be arrested and processed that way.
Okay. No more questions?
Counselor LaCruz?
Yes. I would like to say congratulations to the police department because it hasn't been that kind of situation in Lawrence where we, the family crying for our people and the police department and giving the people to ICE. So far, it has been a great job, uh, even though that we have a situation at, um, immigration department where, um, uh, a family was taken from ICE.
Right.
Uh, two family were taken from ICE. Uh, they even has stopped doing that in the city and it has been slowed down. In another words, uh, the police department is here to protect us, to protect the people in Lawrence and that we feel, um, that you are there to, to save us in any kind of situation, not to tell ICE that we are a criminal or whatever mistake that we have made because we have people that they going to cross the green light.
Right.
Um, we have people that are going to New Hampshire that they are not, uh, legal immigrants. Um, but the city of Lawrence has that beautiful record of not putting our people in danger with the ICE situation. And I would like to say thank you and we would like to see, uh, the continuation of these ordinance, the, the community trusts, uh, the police department.
I would, I would just, um, make a couple of comments on that as, as, as a son of immigrants myself, you know, I know how, how deeply people want a better life. I watched my parents, um, immigrate to this country, work hard in Malden Mills all those years to, to give their family a better life. So certainly it's a, it's a topic that's high on our list and certainly again, we want the support of the community or we can't do our jobs, you know, uh, the way we want to. Um, so we need to work together and that's, we, we certainly don't wanna lose anybody's trust by, by doing something like, like this.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Chief, um, so two things. One, can you, um, at some point just, uh, help us clear up number nine, just shoot us an email?
Sure.
Uh, just so we, so we know what that-
What the charges were?
-total warrant was, yeah.
Okay.
And also six, what the state warrant was?
Number six? Okay.
Yeah. Um, and also I think the next time that you'll be reporting, I think the-
Should be in May.
Uh, so it says every, every other month, uh, on the Trust Act, so it would be, um, April. Yeah.
April.
Uh, okay, that sounds good. Uh, thank you Chief on that.
Okay.
Is there, are there any other questions?
No.
No? Okay.
What is, what is the law, what does the ordinance say? Every other month, the police department should have a report?
Uh, so yeah, so be- Uh, so let me read it for you, um, counselor. So beginning on September first, 2015 and on every other month thereafter, the Lawrence Police Chief shall submit a report with the information detailed below to the clerk of the city of Lawrence. With a copy sent to the mayor of the city of Lawrence, the city clerk shall docket said report and include in the docket of the agenda of the next occurring meeting of the Lawrence City Council, the total number of ICE hold administrative warrant and notification requests lodged with city law enforcement officials organized by the reasons given for the request. Uh, B, the total number of individuals detained pursuant to section nine, twenty, zero, forty, if any. Uh, C, the total number of individuals transferred to ICE custody and D, the total reimbursement received from the federal government pursuant to any granted hold administrative warrant or notification request organized by case. I think it'd be great, I don't think that we, we might not necessarily need, uh, an oral report, but if it's provided to us, uh, a document is provided to us, we, uh, will let you know, um, ahead of time if, you know, we need to ask you-
Certainly.
-questions on that.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. So is there-
Motion to table item, uh, one thirty-three seventeen.
There's a motion to table item one thirty-three seventeen is the second?
Second.
It is second? Um, need for discussion? No? Alls in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Um, so we will be, uh, tabling that for next time that is brought up. Is there any other item within here that we want to bring up?
Um, through you, uh, last meeting, we actually were looking to have a report on, uh, on item, uh, four thirty-one sixteen, which is the year end safety report. Uh, I would like to take this item out of the table matters.
Is the second?
A second.
Um, discussion? So, uh, all those in favor of, um, moving four thirty-one sixteen out of discussion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it. So we will begin our discussion. Um, so Chief, I, I want to thank you for, um, sort of, you know, you coming on and having, um, us do this report. So one of the things that I think that, that I've, I've been talking to the mayor about, um, I'd like to see more like qua- quarterly reports. I think, um, you see from other departments like Cambridge, Boston, um, do, uh, such like written reports where not just, you know, city officials, but, uh, the constituents at large can have an idea about what goes, you know, what goes on within those departments. And I think that this would be, uh, a good start to, to find out how 2017 went.
Okay. So certainly we can, we can accommodate that. Um, every month we put the statistics together, well, we follow them every day really, but every month we put the statistics together. We may have a comstat meeting, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, um, where we all get together and we discuss the crimes that happened the previous month, um, pros and cons, um, ups and downs, the trends and what we've done about them, how we've counted them, what our strategy has been, what our strategy is gonna be for the next month. So we have those statistics on hand, um, month to month, so that's not a problem.
Sir, before, uh, I don't want to interrupt, uh, is there any document that you want, like us to like make copies of?
Um, I, I thought maybe you might have had it already, the year end review, but apparently not. Um, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm gonna have to give you that. Well, I could give you my notes, I guess. It's kind of all over the place, but if you want to take that.
Sure.
Sorry.
It's gonna be a report. Sorry?
Can I say something?
Yes, Counselor La Cruz? You want me to go ahead or?
No, no, I wanted to say that, um, um, that information is, is, is coming to the neighborhood associations-
Right.
Uh, which is good because people know what's going on. For example, um, in the previous meeting, uh, this, uh, South Lawrence West, uh, meeting, they were talking about that we had twenty-five stolen cars in the city. Then it's good to know because people will ask question, what branch is that car? Where did they park the car? You know, clue things that will help people to understand. You cannot leave your car open.
Right.
Um, I remember Sergeant Caddy explaining to us that, um, um, the Corolla cars were on the road, the people were stealing them and all of that. Then, um, it gives a lot of clues to the neighborhood people, um, what's going on and I love it.
Sounds good.
Um, as you, as you know, I, I know three of you are, are brand new, but, uh, moving, um, back a few, going back a few years now, uh, Counselor Le Plank can probably chime in on this, but we've been, I've been, uh, when I was in detectives and before that, the street narcotics unit, I'd made it, I made it a point to try to get those statistics out in terms of the arrests that we were making and the areas that we were making them and you've probably seen some of those now and now you'll see them from Lieutenant Ciccarelli. Basically whenever we make a drug arrest somewhere, you know, it's good to try to let the constituents know through you if they have questions about crimes and, and arrests and things like that. So I think it's important we get more of that information out, so I agree with you. Um, looking at 2017, we basically had an overall reduction of crime of about seven percent. Um, and that was really fueled by a twenty-five percent reduction in robberies, thirty percent reduction in residential burglaries and a thirty percent reduction in auto theft. Um, certainly we have our challenges with, uh, commercial B and E's and larceny. So if you're familiar with larceny, uh, larceny over two fifty, if you think about this, there's really nothing that's under two hundred and fifty dollars nowadays. Every phone is worth, you know, four hundred, five hundred, six hundred dollars. So that crime is actually being, uh, worked on at the FBI level where they're talking about moving that particular crime up to a thousand dollars. So it wouldn't become a felony until it's over a thousand dollars in value. So if that was the case, I think you'll see a huge reduction in that number for Lawrence, um, moving forward. But in any, any event, we're gonna continue to work on that. The strategy moving forward, um, for the future would be to continue our reduction in auto theft and aggravated assaults is what we're trying to, uh, look, uh, to the future and reduction. If we can just have a three point five percent reduction in crime this coming year, that'll, that'll give us an overall crime number lower than any crime number we've had in over twenty years in Lawrence. So certainly it's trending in the right direction and certainly we, we recognize we have our challenges and that's where we're gonna put our assets to. So in looking at 2017, you have the statistics in front of you, um, we had over sixty-five thousand calls for service. That, that is up four percent. Uh, motor vehicle stops, eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-four motor vehicle stops, that's up over twenty-one percent from last year. And our arrests, two thousand three hundred and fifty-five are actually down by seven percent. Um, so obviously Lawrence is very busy and we do our best to take the calls for service and along with those calls for service, also investigate the crimes that were, you know, that are happening in Lawrence. So I think we've done a pretty good job with that. I think the overall number of cr- the way crime has gone down has been a big part of the impact patrols that were instituted by the mayor and the former chief in terms of hotspot crime patrolling, uh, during certain hours, usually Fridays through Sundays, five PM to five AM is where we saw, uh, saw a lot of activity. So we try to put our resources into those, those timeframes to try to reduce the crime numbers and I think that helped overall. So we're gonna continue moving that forward. A lot of that centers in and around the clubs, as you know. We have a lot of, a lot of gatherings and sometimes fights occur and, and sometimes even shootings, as you're aware. We had, um, a couple of shootings, uh, tragic shootings, uh, last year involving or in and out of the clubs. So we're gonna make sure we take a look at that.
Through you.
If you want to, um, I mean, I could, I don't know how you want to proceed in terms of talking about, um, any of the crimes or the homicides, if you want an update on that or whatever's best I can or how, however you want to proceed.
So, so I mean, I'm sure the councils have questions, but I think, um, since you're, you're leading the report, uh, you know, it's up to you-
Okay.
-if you want to move forward.
So if we want to talk about the homicides a little bit, we had eleven last year, which is double more than we had in, in quite a long time. Um, a lot of those were domestic and or gang related. Um, of the eleven, there's actually one that may end up, uh, being determined or categorized as, uh, non-homicide. And it's kind of tricky for me to tell you because it's still an investigation, but it may or may not be, um, a suicide. And I guess I would like to be able to tell you why that is, but I can't because it's an open investigation. I certainly wouldn't want to jeopardize the investigation of that. But that being said, if that crime is determined by the district attorney's office, it's not being a homicide, the number will fall to ten. So if we had ten for twenty-seven, uh, twenty seventeen, six of those have already been closed by arrest. That gives us four open cases and, um, three of those that have still remain opening are, are narcotics related. Another one, we believe is gang slash domestic related involving a female. I would say that all four of those are very active and just recently some good information has come forward on one of them that we're pursuing. Um, again, I, I would like to be able to tell you more and, more, um, statistically what's going on in those, but I don't want to jeopardize the case or give anything away.
While I, while I doubt that they're watching, let's not risk it, right?
Right. I wouldn't want to get in trouble by the district attorney's office, let's put it that way. Um, so that's kind of it on the homicides unless you have something specific on that that you want to ask me about that I can try to ask.
Yeah, so let's stop there. Are there any questions around homicide?
Around homicide? I just, once, uh, once he gave us all the, all the, um, details about everything and then I would like to take the floor.
Okay. Um, so, sir, continue.
Um, so basically, uh, you have the numbers in front of you there and again, we had an overall reduction of seven percent in crime and, um, so if there's anything particular you want to, uh, talk about?
So, so Chief, if, um, as far as rape, I see that it's gone up. So I'm interested in hearing your perspective of why you think it's gone up? Is it that it's just being reported more and also what we're doing and how we're connecting with other agencies to try to bring that down?
I'm sorry, which number?
Uh, rape.
Oh, rape.
It's thirty-two rapes, up twenty-three percent.
Right. I, I would think a lot of that is, um, in fact, in more reporting and, and on our end and at the hospital, um, I think the, I think that's been, uh, more streamlined. Um, so again, you know, we are working certainly with the, um, all the advocates out there and the district attorney's office. And I think that, um, more victims are coming forward as a result of interactions with victims' advocate witnesses and, and, uh, things that are happening at the courthouse. So I think more reporting is actually happening. It's a very difficult crime, uh, if you think about that in terms of a lot of people, victims don't want to come forward a lot of times with that stuff. It's, sometimes it's domestic related, uh, boyfriend girlfriend type situations, but I think with all the, all the news that's been out there, um, and all the, um, all the highlights that have gone on regarding that and more reporting being done, I think that's why you're seeing that number go up.
Uh, sir, are any of these, um, I mean, I think it's, not to say that they're different, but I mean, are there any of them that are happening out in like in the, like the street? Like, you know, basically like, uh, the attacker is a random individual?
Generally, we haven't, we haven't seen that. I think we had, if you remember last year-
Or the year before, was it that serial?
Yes.
Yeah. Two years ago, we, we had an individual who, we ended up, how many did we end up tying him to?
Uh, we, we wound up tying him, uh, to a box, we six, uh, six rapes.
So, so generally speaking, what we find is that it's, it's a lot of acquaintance type rape with potties and things of that nature, uh, that that's happening. We did have that one occasion where we had what we call a serial rapist, where that individual was, was targeting people off the street. Uh, but we don't see that too often, to be honest with you. It's usually surrounding younger people, younger folks with, uh, drugs and alcohol use being involved.
Okay. Um, Lieutenant, if, if you'd like to speak, you just have to get in front of the mic so, so they can hear. Um, okay. So, so essentially from, from what I'm understanding, that it's not necessarily that there's, uh, more rape going on in the city, it's just that it's being reported a lot more.
Think so. So looking at the numbers for this year so far, the number is actually down. So I think, you know, that's a, that's a positive thing, but yeah, I think, uh, there was a lot more reporting for sure.
Are any of these cases still open?
Um, I'd have to look. I, I'm sure there are, I just don't have the number in front of me. I can get it for you though.
Please. Um, so, uh, just going down to com- commercial burglary. So we see that residential burglary has gone down, but com- commercial burglary went up. Um, you, you know, any reasons as why, why you think that that's happened?
Yeah, I think, um, there have been a number of, um, cases where we have, um, organized groups and it's not just Lawrence, it's in the surrounding towns and, and even up in New Hampshire and Connecticut and actually in New York now that I think about it, there's actually been a couple of task forces that have been combined, led by the FBI to determine what's going on. A lot of these cases are similar that they're breaking into, they're stealing ATMs, there's a sophisticated organized group that's going around just breaking into, uh, places, dragging the ATMs out. So I think it's, it's more about a, um, more about organized groups than, than just someone breaking into a business and, you know, stealing something from them.
Okay. Um, as far as, uh, motor vehicle stops, I think, you know-
Yeah.
Uh, as far as motor vehicle stops, one of the things that I feel like I've seen throughout of the things that I feel like I've seen throughout the city is a lot of, you know, cars, you know, going past the speeding limit, you know, not respecting pedestrians, like running through red lights. So there's always this feeling like, you know, like no one's stopping them, but I see that you, that this, that we have, motor vehicle stops have increased from last year. How many of them, you know, resulted in a fine or an arrest or something like that?
I'm not sure that we have that statistic out of the eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-four stops, how many, I could find out how many citations were given and how many arrests maybe. That'd be a difficult number, but we can try to work on that. I would just say that it's part of, you know, a strategy of ours to try to be as visible as possible, get out there and stop as many people as possible so that they can see the police and hopefully that would stop them from thinking about committing a crime. So we certainly have tried to make sure that we do a lot of motor vehicle stops on each shift, whether it's evening midnights, four o'clock in the morning, you know, that's when we have our guys running around trying to do commercial burglaries or something like that. So we try to target certain cars, like minivans, minivans have been using a lot of commercial brakes because of the, you know, the big interior on them and stuff or for stealing rims and tires. So we put out those, that information to the different, different platoons, whether it's days, nights, different crimes happen on different, different times as, so commercial burglaries generally tend to be a midnight shift type problem. So we've initiated building checks where the officers will go around and check the businesses like you would see in the old days and write out a, a building check, they saw this, they saw that, and they would leave that slip for the business owner. That way the business owner would come in the next day, he'd say, oh, the police were here and they checked it or whatever. We've actually found some breaks that way where there were no alarms, but the officer actually by checking the building actually found a break. So we're trying to do those, that certain thing, increase our visibility and increase our building checks just to try to deter people that they know that we're out there doing it. So hopefully they don't do it in Lawrence.
Are there any questions? Councilor La Cruz?
Going back to the rape, remember that it's mostly a family issue. When a girl is being raped, they don't go, they don't inform the police department because, you know, they had to care about home, shelter, they had to think about many of the issues and therefore they're not reporting as many as rape that we have in the city. Then it's a very sensitive issue that most people engaged don't want to talk about it.
Yeah, it's difficult. I know that we are hiring a domestic violence and Lawrence Police Director and one of the functions of that individual is going to be directly related to domestic violence and rape and missing kids and things of that nature. So we're trying to take another look at it and see again, as to your point, counselor, certainly we run into the issue where a lot of people don't want to report it. We just had one over the weekend where an individual, and again, it had, had to do with an immigration issue, that she didn't want to report it because she was afraid that her husband would actually, you know, be deported because of it. But the officer did a good job and made an arrest and whether or not that person, you know, gets deported because of it is, is up to the courts, but there is that certain problem with victims coming forward, not only for rapes, but for other things, you know, regarding that. So we're, we're trying to do our best to get that information out there and certainly the way of the world now is the movement that's happening, a lot of women are coming forward and telling their stories and hopefully that gives people power and strength to tell their story and come forward with and tell us so that we can take appropriate action.
Councilor Rivas?
Yes. Chief, thank you for being here once again and.
You're welcome.
And I just wanted to, to point a few things on this report. So basically when, when Council President and myself decided to put this item on the agenda, it was because we were, we were looking forward to get an official report. This is great statistics, but we would like to see a report.
Sure.
And the way that is supposed to be reported compared to Massachusetts statistics and other cities and towns that are close in terms of population to Lawrence.
Okay.
Because when we said motor up a hundred and twenty percent, so we don't know like based on what we comparing this data. Next year it could be down twenty percent, but it was up the previous year for a hundred and twenty percent. So it's like, we really don't know, like, we, we actually taking these statistics as a normal statistic for the city of Lawrence and act upon based on a number, but that doesn't tell me perhaps what is Lawrence compared to the state in terms of crime. Because that, that, that's something that is not being reported like, or I don't know if you have that information with you, but I would like to see something related to other cities and towns comparing, comparing Lawrence to other cities and towns that have similar population and similar issues to us and, and compared to the state level. When I was looking at some statistic a few weeks ago, I was looking at, I was looking at statistics from Boston and they were saying, oh, based on this amount of population for a one thousand present, this is the amount of crime they have perhaps on that specific way of reporting.
Yep.
We got a good idea once we have that because I mean, this is not, this is something that is, we taking, we taking those number as normal and next year we're going to compare it to the previous year and then it's not quite helping us. Because I don't know what happened twenty-five years ago. I don't know if the crimes were lower or higher back then.
No problem. Yeah, so what, what we do put, we do this every month as well and every year, we have the numbers across the board for, for all the years and all the categories. So you can go all the way back to two thousand and six and you can see how many murders we had and then you can compare it to, to twenty seventeen, I think that's what you're looking for, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, like, like what I'm saying is like, it's good to have all those numbers, but it's not telling me whether or not we are actually working to reduce those numbers because those are numbers that are, those numbers are like a typical situation for Lawrence, but that doesn't mean that we kind of like, you know, working on the strategies to reduce the number or, or we actually lack on the strategy to, and allow the numbers to go up or something like that. It's like the reporting should be based on something that is statistically proven to us in terms of crime and that way we know whether or not Lawrence is reducing crime more, perhaps we, we not. And so next time that we actually take this item out of the agenda, if possible, can you provide us with, with an official report?
Yeah, something more, yeah, more comprehensive.
And, and, and something that, you know, it's, it's more like, we can say, look, Lawrence reduced the crime by this percentage based on population, based on.
Yep.
Based on any other factor that, you know, other cities and towns or statistics on this, on these matters have to be reported.
I can get you that before the next meeting for sure. I thought, I was given that you just wanted a review, you want something, a comprehensive report, but I can give you, I can give you that for sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Also Chief, I would like you to take a look into item three thirty fourteen, which is similar to this in a way because I mean, those two can be merged together and that one is a crime reduction strategy for the city of Lawrence. So when you give us that report, can you actually include in a strategy in terms of reducing that specific crime or what you've been working on?
On which crime?
Any, all of them.
Okay.
So in, in a specific strategy in terms of reducing that specific reporting that you're giving us.
Sure.
So that way we, we kind of like said, oh, the crime went up by this percent.
Right.
But this is what we're doing to reduce it.
Right.
And, and, and that will be a good thing to, to have and discuss because in that way we will actually hold you accountable.
Sure.
For that matters and, and, and be able to work together with the police department and any other particular department that help us and help the city to reduce those specific crimes.
Sure.
Because at the end of the day, we would like to be part of the solution, but before we do that, there have to be a plan to reduce those, those crimes.
Certainly.
You probably have those.
We do.
Already. Chief, when we talk about commercial burglary, it went up by twenty-two percent.
Right.
Okay. Do we follow up with the commercial on, with the, with the business owners in terms of reporting them eventually what happened three months from, from that event? Did they make an arrest? It was prosecuted and so forth and so on because we have have a few complaints or at least I have, I have here a few complaints from people that says, oh, the police passed by, but nothing happened after, thereafter.
Yeah, I think we're trying to do a better job of, of going back and speaking to people, but again, that goes towards the building, just like the building checks. For, for whatever reason, years ago, the building checks were stopped and I reinstituted them when I took over because I wanted the business owners to know that we're out there checking on their businesses. So to follow up to your point, we, we do, each case is different in what kind of information the business owner may get, if the case is going forward, but we have to go back, we talk to them about video, we talk to them about their security issues moving forward, we give them advice on that and then they'll get their updates on the case as that goes. But certainly we need to probably do that a little bit more.
Chief, there is another situation with the commercial burglaries that, that I have noticed. At one point I have an interaction with one of your officers and when they were looking at the cameras, he explained to me that some of their commercial, commercial owners or business owner, they don't know how to place those cameras in terms of perhaps catching the guy, they just want to place it in a specific place to save the money from their own employee.
Right.
So there is a way that we can provide that information to the business owners in terms of helping you when, when something happened in terms of probably a training or a memo or something that help out those placing of those cameras and that way you, 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 you get that information.
Yeah.
Help them out better.
Yeah, for sure. We need to do more of that. I think what we try to do is when we go in and we try to evaluate every business and we try to give them that information, you know, it'd be good if you had a camera here or don't, you know, like in residential B and Es with the, with the, you know, putting your air conditioner in the window, you know, you need to secure that from the inside with a screw and all that. So we do, we try to do a security evaluation for every business that we go into to try to give them information that hopefully that they're not a victim of a crime.
Chief, another thing that I would like to ask you, do you believe, um, community policing?
Absolutely.
How do you think it's, that can increase and, and, and help your department?
Well, again, I think in order to gain the public's trust, they need to see the police officers, they need to speak with the police officers. The only way you're going to do that is get the police officers out of the cars and onto the street, walking or pedal bike, interacting with the business owners, going in and out of business, introducing themselves, keeping, trying to keep the same officers in the same areas. So I think that we need to increase that by a lot coming in the spring and summer for sure.
Are you planning on increasing community policing in the city?
Absolutely, yes. That's why we're doing an entire evaluation of the police department right now to try to get more cops out of the station and onto the street because that's what we need.
All right, no more questions.
Thank you. Councilor LaPlat?
Thank you, Chief, for all these numbers. What's interesting to me is, is the stuff that's not part of the felony crimes. You mentioned on here the motor vehicle stops. What really impacts, all these things impact our residents understandably. What's not on here that really impacts our residents, it's not the sexy stuff, it's the quality of life stuff. It's the number of times residents have got to call regarding boys, horns, those kinds of things, speeding down the street. And this is, this is a small thing, but, but they're usually, usually young people, but not all the time, who decide that they're going to walk in front of a car, for example, in the middle of the street jaywalking while they're, you know, and that happens to everybody. But these are the things that people is like, what are they doing? I, you know, it, it, it really kills the quality of life. And so I, I rarely see those numbers on here. I've, I've seen these numbers before, I've seen them every year, but I don't see the numbers dealing with things such as the noise and the speeding and the parking, parking issues. And I'm not sure if that's something that you guys follow or there's a special area that deals with just parking, the parking tickets, because that drives neighbors crazy too. They can't park nearby, people are parking on the wrong side of the street, supposed to be alternate parking and it goes on and on. So I realize when you deal with robberies, murders and rapes, noise ordinance violations don't, are really pale, but the stuff that drives people out of the city are these smaller things. So I wanted to see if you could comment on that.
So my, my comment would be that, you know, last year we did sixty-five thousand nine hundred and twelve calls for service. So I'd say it's a, it's a balance that you really need to try to find in the police department. There's only so many cops to go around to answer those high priority type calls and certainly we recognize that noise, as you said, drives people crazy and we certainly don't want anybody to live that way. Lawrence is very condensed, so a little bit of noise goes a long way, if you will. So it's a balance. We put extra cars out, impact patrols specifically to deal with noise. We have those kind of calls after the club hours get out, people want to go to someone's house and play the music till, you know, all hours of the night and we try to respond to those calls and, and give out tickets to try to, to try to change people's behavior. So it's a balancing act really. I can get you the numbers on how many noise tickets were written if you'd like, but I would just say that it's a, it's a balancing act between sixty-five thousand calls for service and trying to deal with those smaller things, if you will, but they're not lost on us for sure. We definitely recognize that little small things go a long way for a lot of people when you're not dealing with some of these other things. So we're just going to try to continue to, you know, to, to take it, take that, take that to heart, you know, and try to deal with it.
And thank you. And I just want to reemphasize one of the things the Vice President said, which is, you know, we need a trend line. How does, how does the commercial burglary in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen by raw numbers and that gives us a better picture? Where are we over the course of a five-year period?
Right.
And, and if we see that, then okay, are we making a net, a net impact positive? Are we, are we regressing somewhat? Where are we on that? I think, I think that's useful. I think this information is useful, but I think that once you, there's no context. We need context, which I think is what he's trying to find out. I'm not as interested, I mean, I'm slightly interested in knowing what other communities are doing and how we compare with them, but I'm more interested in seeing how we're faring ourselves.
Right.
Are we going up or down or improving or not improving? That would be of interest to me.
Yeah, we have those numbers, like I said, and we were tracking them and, and earlier when I spoke about overall crime being down seven percent, I'm basing that off, off these numbers and I can see every category here of, of the numbers. And again, if we go down three point five percent, we'll have the lowest overall crime number, that's all the crime statistics together, motor vehicle, theft, larcenies, everything together, murders, rapes, everything together gives you one big number. So, you know, last year we had an auto theft, four hundred and eight, you know, the year before that it was five eighty-one, the year before that, six forty-eight, the year before that, seven seventy-eight. So you can see how we're trending down. We have all the statistics for every, every crime category, so we can see, we can see how Lawrence is faring and I guess that's how I was looking at it when you asked for a review, I was looking at our review, but certainly we can put together how we stand with, with other communities and what they're seeing for sure.
Thank you. Councilor La Cruz?
Yes, I think, um, can, I'm going to ask you to please take a different approach to engage people in the community. Working with the police department and the community, I think we need to create like forums in the different area, including parents and kids, where you give the people the opportunity to, to tell us what it is that they would like to see and what are the consequence for a specific behavior. The noise is one of the issues that is affecting our elderly people a lot. I know somebody who called me like around five o'clock in the afternoon, okay, people was having a party, but at two o'clock in the morning, that person got a heart attack because of the noise that was two days on a row. Then I think it's time to educate the community and to engage them and to put the responsibility on the people.
Right.
If you create those kind of forums where parents and kids have to go, then we should ask the school to be part of and help at the different industry and the different school sites that we have and let people understand that they're going to get a ticket. You know, you, you don't listen, you don't follow instruction. There is another family on some rate, the same people doing the same party, the same noise over and over and over. And when the police come, you know, they turn off the, the, the music and when they leave, they turn it on again. Then the neighbors are already tired of calling and calling and calling. I think we have to use a different approach in which everybody will be included in the presentation, consequence and ticket.
I agree. Thank you, Counselor. Chief, you wanted to ask a question as well?
No, I mean, once you finish, I can take the floor.
Okay. So I'd like to work with you on this because I think outside of the report, as I said it earlier, one of the things that I'm looking forward is quarterly reports. I think that the best way that you could be informed of what's going on with the department is to read not just data, but exactly an interpretation of that data and the strategy around it, right? And I think that, that goes beyond sort of the type of conversations that we have at neighborhood meetings or even just a reading of, you know, a couple of like, you know, highlights. And that's a, a, a better way to sort of see how the police department is doing and how, you know, we as counselors can be of better help to what you're doing. So I definitely would like to help you that in, in the future. And I think, you know, earlier my question about motor vehicle stops, it was regarding something that Counselor Plan articulated very well, which I think is just quarterly of life issues, that I think that there's this feeling within the community because they see all these small things happening, like they see a car go by at, you know, sixty miles per hour from, you know, from, from Methuen, you know, all the way to Broadway and, you know, you're like, all right, so I've seen this like six, seven times in the span of an hour, you know, what, what's going on here? And I know that, you know, police officers are in, in different places or how Counselor La Cruz, you know, mentioned, you know, there was a constituent that, you know, she would call me at like twelve thirty, one o'clock in the morning and I would say, hey, just send, you know, send that email about noise complaint. But, you know, that individual got like two, three, two, three, several calls to the police department a day. So, you know, so there's a question about when is this person actually being ticketed? So I think, you know, like seeing that information in front of you and understanding what the So I think, you know, like, seeing that information in front of you and understanding what the thought process is and what the true strategy is within the Police Department gives us a better idea of what exactly is going on, where, you know, and where we can jump in and try to be of better service. So I'll definitely, moving forward, you know, we can have that conversation about what these reports should look like.
Sure.
Counselor, would you guys, you have some questions?
Sure, I do have. A couple more questions. I just wanted to point out that five out of the eight categories that we have here in front of us went up. So 2017 was not a good year for the City of Lawrence in terms of crime. I have another question for you. When we are talking about the 18,874 motor vehicle stops, it went up by 21 percent. Can you provide us a next sign that you report on this? How many of those were Lawrence residents, and how many were not?
Not sure. I don't know if the computer, I don't know if the computer will give us that information. We can try.
Okay, no problem. Can you at least provide us with how many of those motor vehicle stops were related to drugs?
If there was an arrest made.
Okay, fair enough. Also, I just want to make sure that when we talk about public safety, we're not talking only about motor rape, robbery, or guns or drugs, that we are also talking about traffic violation and perhaps speed violations and all those stuff, because that's something that is affecting the, a day-to-day regular person on the neighbors when somebody's going 60 miles an hour when they're supposed to be dodging. So currently, under the ordinance committee, we have a ordinance to try to reduce the speed limit of the City of Lawrence to 25 miles an hour. That report was sent to the Department for recommendation probably three months ago. So once you get back, can you please take a look into that? Because that's going to be part of a good strategy, a good strategy, as part of the strategy to reduce crimes as well, once we reduce the speed limit of the city. And another thing that I just wanted to ask you, I know that this is not part of that topic, but what do you think about that Accelerated Police?
I think they do a great service. I think that we could probably use them a little bit more, too. It's one of the things that we're taking a look at now. How many they have? When are they available? Can we use them to maybe go out in the community and walk a little bit? They do provide patrols, some patrols during the week. Each one of them is asked to do one shift, I believe it is one shift per week, as part of their commitment to be what we call a special, which allows them to work road details when they're available. So we do utilize them, they do a great service during club closings, they help us close off streets so that we can flow the traffic out of the area, so we don't have that constant flow of cars going around the block, as you would see at the beach or something like that. Because if we can get the people away from the area, then we can reduce our number of incidents that we've had. We've been successful doing that around the clubs. So they do provide a good service. Do you have a specific question about?
Sure. Well, July is coming up. Their budget is $16,000. That's what they're working on. I would like to see how we can work together to increase the budget of the Accelerated Police and be able to help them to provide that great job that you just described that they do for the community. So I just want you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Well, Chief, I want to thank you for coming down. And I'll say that even though crime has gone up in a couple of items, we have seen 7% total reduction in crime altogether, and, you know, one of the things that I'm always happy about is sort of the auto theft, because I think, you know, at the end of the day, that hits a lot of individuals in their pockets, the fact that we have to pay so much in insurance, whereas if you live in one of the surrounding communities, you don't. So I think, you know, every time that we can, you know, push on that and also push on, you know, sort of like fake, you know, fake claims, you know, helps our community a lot. I was going to say goodbye, but I think Ms. LaCruz has a question?
No, I wanted to say that I think we have to say thank you, because we have a lot of police coming over. The number has increased, the Police Department, and at the same time, we have to keep finding solution to have more time for the Police Department to do their job than babysitting the people in the community. As for example, I think most business should be closed by 10 o'clock, that you have plenty time to work on the emergency that we have in the community. Then I will continue to propose that most business be closed by 10. That will give more safety to, not only to the Police Department to do the work, but to the citizen of Lawrence to be able to walk around in the city.
Well, Chief, thank you so much for coming on, and looking forward to working with you.
Absolutely, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anything else on the agenda?
I'm good.
Is there a motion to?
Counselor, Chairman, I just want to throw a couple of dates for our next meeting, if that's all right?
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, sounds great.
I'd like to propose two options, March 12th or March the 19th, they're both Monday nights.
March 12th. So Maria, can I ask, do you remember if there is a neighborhood meeting on the 12th?
On the 12th, yes. The second week of the month.
Okay. So the 19th sounds great. Is there another date that works for people that's not, does the 19th work for anybody else?
It does.
Well, I told you this much going through you. Usually, the meetings should be in the off week. I understand that the neighborhood meetings happen on that.
I'm sorry, the 26th. I'm sorry, the 26th.
March 26th, Monday.
My bad.
So the 12th or the 26th?
The 26th, I think, is good.
All right, so it's up to the committee. So both work for me. I mean, I think the only issue is on the 12th, there is a neighborhood meeting, and, you know, if we ask our Police Chief to be on there, then he won't be able to attend that neighborhood meeting. So I think it might be best for the 26th, but...
Yes, I think the 26th is good.
Counselor, would you guys?
No problem with me.
All right, sounds great.
And let me recommend that going on with the theme, we have one item, one thing to deal with, and in no particular order, maybe we'll do commercial burglaries first, we can deal with that issue. And my hope for that would be to have a very comprehensive discussion, who's affected, almost like a case study, numbers, trend lines over the course. What is commercial burglary? I mean, it's kind of self-evident by the name of it, but go into some depth as to what that is. What kind of common themes are we seeing with commercial burglaries? And what are we doing to try to ramp down that number? It was up 22% last year, so what are we, what are we looking to do to try to bring that number down? You mentioned some of the strategies tonight about talking with business owners, I heard that, and some other stuff. What I want to do is really, really dig down deep into each of these topics and talk in depth about each one of them, and I would hope that would be the first one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Chief, so I saw that you, Counselor Rodriguez was saying that you were able to attend the neighborhood meeting?
Tonight? Yeah, I went there first.
Okay, so is it more helpful for you if it's on a date where there isn't a neighborhood meeting?
That's fine. You meet at 7:30. I think the meeting's usually 6:30.
Sixty.
So I can go to both, that's fine. If that works for you.
Okay. So I think, so March 12th sounds better.
Oh, 12? 7:30.
March 12th.
March 12th, 7:30.
Why not to do it, why not skip the Monday?
Well, because, I mean, he's already on a neighborhood association meeting, so for him to come back on a night, it's going to be easier for him. And the meetings actually take an hour.
One hour, I would hope we would have, Mr. Chairman, one hour, no more than one hour with him. I think we can get everything done within that one hour. It'd be my goal, our goal, I would hope.
Yeah, let's hope.
Okay.
In terms of probably that item, yes, if we have another report, then it will take more.
All right, so March 12th, 7:30.
7:30.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chief, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All those in favor to adjourn, please, if I say aye.
Aye.
Guys, have it. Thank you.